Good evening. Today is Monday, October 5th, 2020. This is the Westwood Select Board pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 1B, and the Governor's March 23rd, 2020, emergency order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting will be conducted via remote participation by the board. Westwood Media Center is live streaming this meeting. I would encourage others to watch it on Comcast Channel 12 and Verizon Channel 42. Westwood Media Center will also keep a recording and it will be available on their website. The public is encouraged to watch our meeting via Westwood Media Center and join via Zoom webinar as posted on our notice of meeting. The public will be allowed to make comments via the Q&amp;A function. Every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite our best efforts, we will post everything on the town website. We grant permission to Westwood Media Center to record this meeting. Is there anybody else wishing to record the meeting? Seeing none. Okay. So I'm going to give two brief updates for the chair update. One is pertaining to the Westwood Main Library. There is now limited express browsing in curbside pickup. As part of its reopening plan, Westwood Public Library will be offering limited express browsing by appointment. This is the first phase of the library's reopening plan. The community room has been transferred into a mini library with material for adults and teens. The gallery has been repurposed for browsing space for children. Browsing hours on Monday through Friday from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Appointments are required. Appointments can be made online at the library's website or by calling the library at 781-320-1081. Curbside pickup continues to be available. Over 300 pickups have occurred since September. The Council on Aging in conjunction with the library also offers homebound delivery and outreach to seniors. For more information, please contact Karen Gallagher at 781-320-1049. On Saturday, October 17th, Westwood Recycling Day. In coordination of the DPW and WAC, the Westwood Environmental Action Committee, this event will occur from 8:00 a.m. to noon at the DPW Yard at 50 Carri Street. Items accepted for free include large rigid plastic items such as laundry baskets, toys, buckets, and crates, remove metal parts, okay, clean textiles, books, commercial CDs, DVDs, stuffed animals, luggage, and scrap metal. Items accepted for a fee, cash or check only include TVs, computers, monitors, large appliances, and printers. Please visit the town website at westwood.m-a.us for more information. That is the extent of the chair update tonight. And at this time, the board will be entering into executive session. Let me just... This evening, the Select Board is going into executive session for two issues. One is pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to an ongoing litigation. And the second is pursuant to General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 22F&amp;G, to comply with any general law for review of executive session minutes, both of which would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governing body if discussions were in open session. The board will be returning to open session at 6:00 p.m. this evening. Do we have a motion to go into executive session?
Nancy, I believe you're on mute.
You're muted.
We're both there.
So moved.
Okay. We have a second?
What? Second.
Okay. Mrs. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So we will return to open session at 6:00 p.m. Thank you all. It's now 6:00 p.m. The Westwood Select Board will resume into open session. It is Monday, October 5th. Our next order of business is for an update on voter registration and voting options for the November 3rd election. And I welcome our town clerk, Dottie Powers, who will present some information.
Thank you Chairman Hickey and Select Board for having me on tonight to explain the process for a very important upcoming election. The presidential election will take place on Tuesday, November 3rd. And right now, you... Voter registration is... The last day to register to vote is Saturday, October 24th. Now, if you're not sure if you're registered to vote, you can go onto the Secretary of State's online portal. And I will open this up for you. And right here, voting and elections. So you put in your information and it will let you know if you're registered to vote and we...
Got it. Dottie, that's not appearing on our screen. It was coming up as a blank blue screen.
Oh, really? Now?
It's behind it.
Nothing.
Yeah, even behind it doesn't look like it's the right thing. Just explain it because for some reason, it's not showing.
So basically, what I was trying to do is get into the Secretary of State's online voter registration portal. And this is where you would check to see if you are a registered voter. The... If... I'm sorry that it's not coming up, but just if you go on to, I'll give you the link and you can check it. It's very important for you to check before you go to vote on Election Day. It's www.scc.state.m-a.us backslash voter registration search, backslash myvoterregstatus dot A S P X. We will be having a special voter registration session for anybody that wishes to come in person. And that is going to be on Saturday, October 26th. That will be from 7 p... Oh, I'm sorry. So October 24th, from 2:00 to 4:00, and 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. We will be practicing all social distancing guidelines on that day. Now, you can also register to vote online. And that's again, I don't think I'm going to be able to get into this portal. Let me try. Are you seeing anything on your screens?
No.
Again, no. Sorry about that. I thought that would have been very helpful for everybody.
Well, this presentation, can we post it though, so people can go to it and click through it if they would need?
Absolutely, because there's a lot of important information here. And again, it's very easy. If you check your voter registration status and you're not registered, you have a lot of different options. You can register to vote online. You can register to vote by mail. You can call us, the town clerk's office. We can send you out an application. Or you can come to Town Hall on Saturday, October 24th. Now, you have three options to vote in this election. The first option would be by mail. You have to submit an application to the town clerk's office no later than October 29th. Applications are available in the lobby at the Westwood Police Station at 588 High Street, or by contacting the town clerk's office, 781-320-1013, or 781-320-3964, or vote by mail at townhall.westwood.m-a.us. We'll get that email and we can send you out your application. Ballots, we are in the process. We're very happy to inform all of our residents that we did receive the ballots today. We are working very hard to get them out. There is approximately 5,000 ballots that we're going to be mailing out. So we should hope, we hope to get them all done by the end of the week. So they should be getting your mailboxes late this week or early next week. You have a few different choices to return your ballot. First choice is by mail, and there is postage paid envelopes for you to do that. You can also drop it off. There's a secure ballot drop box, and there's a picture of it right here. And that's located in front of the police station, and we just brought it out. So it's there for when you get your ballots and mail them back. Now, we are getting a lot of questions about your ballots. People are concerned that you haven't received them. It's because we just received them. You can check the status of your mail-in ballot. And that again, you can go to the Secretary of State's Election Division. And their portal is where do I vote m-a slash track my ballot. But what we're going to do is put this PowerPoint on Westwood Media Center, so you'll have access to all these links. Now, ballots that are returned by mail must be postmarked no later than November 3rd and received no later than November 6th to be added to the election results. The ballots will be processed. So anything that we receive, now, not the ones you have to, if you're going to drop it off in the drop box in front of the police station, that has to be by 8:00 p.m. on Election Night, November 3rd. If you choose to mail your ballot, please try to mail it early. If, you know, for some reason, it's mailed late, as long as it's postmarked again by November 3rd. We are going to be having a special session with our voter registrars to count these ballots that we received from November 3rd through 5:00 p.m. on November 6th. Now, if you have asked for an absentee or vote by mail ballot to be sent to you and it's been accepted, you cannot vote in person on Election Day. The second choice for voting in this election is early voting in person. We will have early voting set up at the Gillette Meeting Room at the Westwood Police Station at 588 High Street. The dates are as follows. And again, this is a two-week period starting Saturday, October 17th, and ending Friday, October 30th at 1:00 p.m. For those of you that may be concerned about precautions and COVID issues, we take everybody's safety into account, the safety of staff and voters. And I can reassure everybody that it will be very safe for you to vote. We will make sure that we have all protocols in place. And we will ask that you please respect your neighbor in wear or facial covering. The third way to vote is to vote in person. And again, we're going to be setting up our polling places in accordance with all COVID-19 precautions, again, for the safety and well-being of staff and voters. And again, if I can't reiterate, you know, again, is we encourage all voters to wear facial coverings when going to vote. And, you know, also, we are only allowing, due to Board of Health regulations and state regulations, so many people in the polling place at a time. So I ask that everybody be patient. We are going to work as hard as we can to get everybody in, so you're not waiting a long time. But if you do decide to go on Election Day, we are only allowing a certain amount of people in at a time. There are four polling locations in town. And Precinct 1 is the Council on Aging, 16 Manhattan Street. Precinct 2 is the Sheen School, 549 Pond Street. Precinct 3 is the Hanlon School at 790 Gay Street. And Precinct 4 is the Downey School at 250 Downey Street. And again, if you're not sure where you go to vote, you can go to the Secretary of State's website. There is a link. And again, unfortunately, it's not coming up here. But we will have that on the website, and also we'll do it with the Westwood Media Center. If you have no access to a computer and are not able to check, feel free to call the office at any time, and we'll let you know where to vote. It's better to know ahead of time than to not be sure on Election Day. And again, any questions that you have, please feel free to call me or my staff. We're here, and, you know, we're working really hard to make you all comfortable and let you know that your vote is very important. We take the democratic process very seriously in Westwood. And we work really diligently and hard to ensure that your votes are private and secure at all times and counted on Election Day. So thank you for your time tonight. And again, any questions you have, feel free to reach out.
Dottie, there are a couple of questions. I'll have Tish read. But so, did you get requests for 5,000 ballots? Is that...
Yes, we did. And we're continuing to get requests.
Wow. And what does that look like from four years ago roughly? Any idea?
Oh, yeah. So we didn't have vote by mail four years ago.
Okay.
We had absentee voting, which in essence, it's the same. However, there are more stringent rules with absentee voting. And we didn't have this pandemic, so people wanted to go out to the polls and vote. And typically, absentee voting is for people that either religious beliefs exempt you from going to the polls, you have an illness, or you're not in town for voting. Those would be the reasons typically somebody would go. Now, because of COVID, people are, you know, uncomfortable going out to the polls. So they have those three options. And I think, John, to answer your question, we probably had about 900 absentee voters in 2016.
And Dottie, you're going to post this on the town website?
Yes, I will.
And then Tish, are there any other questions? Tish for Dottie?
There are two other questions. So actually, there's three from the same person, Christina Martin. Are you accepting volunteers to help with voting? I really appreciate people's offers, but we do have an election staff that's been trained. And we, at current time, we don't need anybody. But, you know, if she wants to reach out to me directly, if there becomes an opening, or if somebody is not available, I'm more than happy to talk to people. But right now, we are, we have a full complement of staff.
Okay. And from Christina Martin again, I think you answered this. Can you put Dottie's slide deck on the town website too? And you are going to do it?
Yep, I'll do that tonight.
And then the third question is from Christina Martin. Clarify absentee ballot statements. Public radio has been saying, even if you request an absentee ballot, you can opt to vote in person. You just cannot also send in the absentee ballot. Can you clarify what Dottie said about if your absentee request is accepted?
If we accept your absentee or your early vote by mail ballot, then no, you cannot go to the polls and vote. So if it's been accepted, it's been processed, you will not be able to vote at the polls. And if you haven't returned it, you would be allowed to, and that is a process as well. My staff has got, they have to check with our office to make sure that it hasn't been processed here. So we don't get any duplication of voters.
And that will add on time while people are in the voting area, is that true?
Absolutely. It happened for the primary. We had quite a few people at every precinct that decided they wanted to vote at the polls. And so they will have to wait because it does have to be verified. And again, you know, this is very serious. And we know there's been a lot in the media about voting and people voting more than once. It doesn't happen. We have checks and balances. Every day when we get the ballots in, they go into our state system, which is secure. And we run reports constantly. And we run reports the day of the election so that there is no opportunity for anybody to be able to vote more than once.
So Dottie, one way would be that if you requested an absentee ballot and you don't mail it back in, if you bring it with you to the poll, that would help speed up the request?
So, yeah. So they're still going to have to call. I still, even if you bring that ballot, I still want people to call. We just, we want to follow all of the guidelines that have been put in place by the Secretary of State in terms of elections. It's very important. And if you, if you are, if you do decide that you want to vote at the polls, it would be helpful because, to be honest with you, I don't want ballots, you know, just out there. So that would be very helpful if you decide. Please bring those, and we will put them in a spoil ballot envelope.
I think there's another one.
There is. All right. There's one more question from Ken Fiscaldo. How do you prevent someone from mailing in a ballot and also going in person to vote? Since the ballots could arrive after November 3rd, how would you know that the person did not vote twice?
Because, again, we have reports. We, as soon as a ballot comes in, it goes right into our system. And quite honestly, there is, I think it's going to be, it would be impossible for that to happen. And this is all from an election reform bill, and it was to help people because of COVID. And it's just really for these two elections. And they just felt like, and I think again, it was in the public, that because of the mail situation, people were afraid their ballot was not going to get here on time. So they allowed, the state legislature has allowed that extra three days. But again, there's checks and balances. And that's why they're not done right away. That's why anything that comes in, that's all going to be done at the end of the week so that we have an opportunity to go through all of our records. So that would be, to Ken's question, that would be impossible.
Okay. Thank you, Dottie.
You're welcome.
Thank you for all that information. It's great.
You're welcome.
We are going to move on to our next action item, which is to vote and sign to post the November 3rd Presidential Election warrant. Purpose is for the Select Board to sign and post the November 3rd, 2020 State Presidential Election warrant. The state presidential election will be held on Tuesday, November 3rd, 2020. Polls will be open on Election Day from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. at the four polling locations in town. Precinct 1 is the Council on Aging at 60 Manhattan Street. Precinct 2 is the Sheen School at 549 Pond Street. Precinct 3 is the Hanlon School at 790 Gay Street. And Precinct 4 is the Downey School at 250 Downey Street. Any questions or discussion on that?
No.
I move that we sign and post the November 3rd, 2020 State Presidential Election warrant. And for the warrant to be posted by the constables throughout the town and online on the town website.
I'll second.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Walsh? Okay, thank you. We'll move on.
Order, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Where is it going to be available for them to sign, Dottie?
They can come here to Town Hall and sign it. Is everybody around so that you can come in? We still have plenty of time, but I'd rather get it out sooner than later. So within the next week, if you can come, just, Tish will have it in her office. I have it. And I have a few other things that I need you to sign as well.
Hey, moving on. The Shuttleworth Parcel Solar Way. So this is for the Select Board to review the solar Phase 2 proposal for the Shuttleworth Parcel. Chris, there's a great deal of background here. Is Dan going to go through that? Or do you want to go through that? How do we want to handle that? I'm happy to read it all.
I think what we can do is we can start with Dan. Dan is going to provide a brief overview of the property. And then the chair can then open it up for discussion with the board.
Good evening, Dan. Thanks for joining us.
Dan, you're muted.
You're on mute.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
Thanks for joining us.
Thank you for having me. As Chris mentioned, you know, I'm familiar with the Shuttleworth Parcel from a sort of a real estate perspective. So he asked me to give a quick little history lesson just so everybody's working from the same frame of information. So Shuttleworth is a 37-acre parcel of land located adjacent to the Hanlon School. It's mostly wooded, if not entirely wooded, but it goes up back behind the Hanlon. By contrast, the Hanlon School is on a separate 8 and 1/2 acre parcel of land, sometime referred to as the Mulva Hill Parcel because it was acquired from a family called the Mulva Hills. Shuttleworth is owned by the town. It was acquired by the town in 1970 from the town of Dedham. I do not know why Dedham had, actually, I think I do know. I think it was left to the town of Dedham by someone. And that's why the town of Dedham had land in Westwood. In 1969...
Dan, I'm sorry. Dan, I'm sorry to interrupt you. You know what? We didn't formally introduce you, and people are asking who you are. I'm sorry. Can you just introduce yourself?
Sure. I'm sorry. I'm Dan Bailey. I'm Special Town Counsel to the Select Board. In this particular case, I'm advising the Select Board on real estate issues related to the Shuttleworth Parcel.
Thank you. I'm sorry about that.
I should have thought of it myself, John. Sorry. The town acquired in 1969, Article 6 of the Westwood Annual Town Meeting, the town voted unanimously to authorize the Select Board to acquire the Shuttleworth Parcel. That vote was very specifically, very specific in terms of authorizing the Select Board to acquire the Shuttleworth Parcel for school purposes. In 1970, there was another vote of Town Meeting that added, the original vote authorized the Select Board to spend up to $40,000. An additional $5,000 was authorized in 1970. And there were four, five, or six more acres added to the size of the parcel. So in 1970, the town of Dedham deeded to the town of Westwood, acting by and through the Board of Selectmen, the 37 acres of Shuttleworth, to the town of Westwood, and the deed specifically said for school purposes. The one other relevant piece of Town Meeting history is from 1994. At the 1994 Town Meeting, Town Meeting voted to expand the permissible uses of the Shuttleworth Parcel. It expanded the use from school purposes to school and municipal purposes. But the municipal purpose was limited to human resources and recreation. So one of the questions that has come up and that we've looked at is, okay, the property was...
Excuse me, Dan?
Yeah.
I don't think it was human resources. I thought it was human services.
I think you're right, Chris. Thank you. Yeah, human services. Yep. And the reasoning behind that, as I understand it, is that there was some thinking possibly of putting the senior center there. One question that's come up is, well, which town board has care, custody, and control of this particular parcel of real estate? And under municipal law, you know, towns may own, you know, the, the real estate's always owned by the town, but it's frequently in care, custody, and control of different boards. Not surprisingly, school properties are generally in care, custody, and control of the school committee. In fact, they're required to be by statute. So we drilled down pretty hard on this. And our conclusion is that this property is in the care, custody, and control of the Select Board for a couple of reasons. First of all, the original Town Meeting authorization authorized the Select Board to acquire the property. Yes, it was acquired for school purposes, but that's a use restriction. It's not any indication of which board was to be in care, custody, and control of it. Custom is also important. And for as long as the town has owned this piece of property, it has been treated as being in the care, custody, and control of the Select Board. And ultimately, the determinative factor is when there's no clear indication, you know, there's no Town Meeting vote saying which board has care, custody, and control, then by statute, Chapter 40, Section 3, it is presumed to be the Executive Board, in this case, the Select Board of Westwood. So the Shuttleworth Parcel is in the care, custody, and control of the Select Board. I'm happy to, you know, I want to take your cue about where to go with this from here. I'm happy to talk about solar uses at that parcel as well and how, you know, how that is controlled under things like zoning. Or we can go in a different direction if you have questions.
So Dan, is there a clear line of demarcation between the Shuttleworth 37 acres and the Hanlon School?
There is. Okay. Yeah, there's separate assessors lots.
I mean, I just want to make sure we have a clear understanding of the property. And then I think we talk about the project and whether we still view this as a viable project. So Michael and Nancy, I don't know if you have anything. I'm happy to continue. No? Okay. And so, Dan, I think the issue of entering into a long-term lease for this property, does or does not need to go to Town Meeting?
Does not.
So I think for me, you know, the challenge is that at fifty thousand feet, I think it looked like two really good viable projects, a school project and a solar project, and we may be able to generate some synergy from them and some construction, some construction, limit some construction redundancy from two big projects. But it just seems as we move forward that that's not maybe necessarily the case. So I don't know if that's so much of a legal issue. I mean, so basically, it's your opinion that the solar array project can continue, the select board can continue the path it's on.
Yes, you know, and the, the, the legal limiting factor that you have is that it would have to be for school purposes. And that means that fifty-one percent of the energy would have to be primarily for school purposes. So that means fifty-one percent of the energy from the solar array would have to be used in Westwood for schools. That's the recent Regis College case, Regis v. Weston. It says, as long as the educational, you know, the, as long as uses that are sort of ancillary to the educational use are primarily for that educational use, then they fall within an educational use category. So it would have, it would have to be school-related, but you have the authority to do it.
And I don't know if you can answer this question, but do we know whether or not fifty-one percent from the solar array will go to the schools?
My understanding is it would.
I hadn't heard that before.
Well, more than that, probably.
Yeah. Schools are very far though. I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, Tom Philbin is able to join the panel if you need him, John.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm back to, I just don't know that these two projects are gonna work side by side. I, I don't know if we wanna entertain trying to instruct Tom to find alternative locations. You know? I'm happy to continue as we are, if there's no other interest, but...
Well, so, I don't know when you wanna discuss it, John, but the, we could be talking about solar all night here and answering a lot of questions about it, but as a member of the school building committee, I think it's important to note that, well, there are a few things I wanna say. First, I wanna say that a lot of people have been critical of this project for many different reasons, but one of the reasons has been directed towards the school committee and the school building committee chair, that that there was an association of these two projects that wasn't transparent. And I just wanna say that the school building project is its own project. And that is exactly what was stated last Friday at the school building committee meeting. It is a standalone project. I think you put it well, John, when you said at fifty thousand square feet, this looked different than drilling down, and here we are, we have, we've all been receiving calls, information, letters that we take into serious consideration. And the school building project should not be criticized or viewed in anything but a very positive way for all the work that people are doing to get information out, to be inclusive, to get input, to factor in the input, and to make that a very positive building for the community. So my feeling is that while the solar project had definite positive elements to it, I don't think we should proceed with it any further on the, on the Shuttleworth site. It's, it's just not achieving what many had hoped it would, and lacking school committee support, it, it's not viable anymore. And, and it's been very clear, the school building committee, which had the school committee representatives in attendance, that, that, the combination of the two projects is not working for them. And I think we should respect that, and I think we should disengage from the solar array at the Shuttleworth site.
No, I, I agree with you, Nancy. I, I've heard from as many proponents as opponents. So I think, to me, the, the politics of it are secondary. I think, you know, we've all been involved in large-scale project management, and if, if you don't have all the stakeholders looking to marry these two projects, it, it's, I think it's gonna be doomed from the outset. So I just wanna be practical. I think it's a good project. I really do. And I'm hoping that Tom can come up with an alternative. But, but I agree. I just think from a practical standpoint, it's just not, it's not gonna work right now. The timing just doesn't work for us. So I don't know, Michael, if you have any thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, look, I, I'll say it's unanimous, but let me just say this, too. I mean, based on what we're receiving energy savings, we're, we're never gonna be able to, you know, build a school with somewhere in the vicinity. I, I don't know the exact number yet, but I wanna say, but, you know, we're talking tens of millions of dollars that we're getting from the state to build this school. Last thing we wanna do is, is have people oppose it because we went forward with this program, this independent project. So I would say we definitely don't wanna jeopardize that, so I'm, uh, let's make it unanimous and, uh, you know, withdraw this proposal and we'll find something else.
Well, I think it's more of, I mean, I, and I guess, I guess we have to figure out the how of that. I mean, I just wanna make it more nuanced, that it's not, you know, it's really the direction from here is for Tom to find, or Tom, Chris, you help me out, I mean, to find alternatives.
Yeah, so, um, work, Tom Philbin is certainly looking, will be looking at other alternatives. We do have some proposals for some solar panels on school buildings. We also have some new proposal for some solar panels on some municipal buildings. That certainly wouldn't generate the renewable energy that a solar array would, so we are still looking at other locations for a solar array. Buy the board with an update at that time.
So, John, what, one thing I did find somewhat interesting is, you know, in our notes under six, when people said, you know, why would you cut down twelve acres of trees? But I noticed that they were, we had notes that the CO2 reduction impact of this twelve acre would be the equivalent of preserving over two hundred acres of old growth tree forest, which I thought was very interesting, but not really relevant to, uh, to, to tonight's discussion, but just so, because people did ask, you know, how much of that really, why, why would you cut down trees? Twelve acres of trees, and the answer is because the energy level would be so much higher to be like, uh, two hundred acres.
Well, I, I agree with you. So I guess...
John, for clarification, too, and, or just to make the point, Dan mentioned the Shuttleworth site is thirty-seven plus acres. Nine acres of that will be used for the new school building once it goes through the approval process. So there is still some acreage of the Shuttleworth site to be used. I just, we've said it a few times, but I just wanna say it again, that, that, that is being used for its intended purpose, too, which was the original acquisition stating that it would be for school use. It's just that that, the potential use was broadened in, in the nineties, but still, in order for us to do this Shuttleworth project with solar, we would need the school committee's support. Absent that, and for a lot of other reasons, we could list, and again, we could be here all night. We've heard the concerns. We've, we know that there are definitely benefits to a solar project there, but it is not the project to proceed with.
Not a marriage that'll work between these two projects. Chris, someone spent a lot of time doing a write-up for us, and I, I just don't wanna, I don't wanna pass over anything. If you think there's something important that we should talk about. I think we know where we're going with this issue, so I don't wanna belabor it, but is there anything you wanna add that, from the write-up?
Well, not from the write-up, but, Mr. Chair, I just wanna say that Tom Philbin has been working very hard for towns, for the town regarding renewable energy and a number of, of projects that he's been working on. I just wanna just call out the hard work that he has done, and that he is, he continues to do to help the town achieve its goal.
Tom has done amazing things for the town. I know he will continue to as well. Tish, are there any relevant questions to queue?
Hey, let's see. All right, there's one question. Who was Dan, but we answered that. Lori Cohen said, no one has explained how you change the use of a, to a solar farm without a town meeting vote. Let me discuss that.
I think Deanne covered that.
Kevin Baker, the school committee said that they are net zero without Shuttleworth. How will fifty percent of any energy generated be distributed? Please tell us what evidence you have to make that statement.
I think we need Tom for that.
We would. A lot of it, I think, you've discussed. Again, a fifty-one percent. We can probably get some more information on that fifty percent. This is one from Kevin Baker. How we involve the public and find an alternative sites?
So what I would say is that our, our, we discuss this frequently at all of our meetings. All of our meetings are posted days before they meet. I would ask people to connect with WAC, to view our agendas, attend our meetings, become involved in this discussion. We're, we'd love to have you.
And maybe also reach out to Tom Philbin, our energy manager, right?
All right. This was from Joe Privatera. This is actually for Dan. I have a question. I'm looking at the deeds for the Father Mulville Conservation Areas. Can you absolutely say the Hamlin School was not built on land that Father Mulville designated as conservation land? Can you go back, can you backtrack that deed for the new school project? I don't know if that's something I wanna discuss tonight, but...
I mean, I can't. I mean, I'd have to go back and review the deeds, and, you know, I, I can get back to Chris with that, and he can reach out to Joe.
Thank you, Dan.
There was one question from Dave Atkins. Can we revisit the proposal for a solar canopy at the high school parking lot, which should provide approximately one-half the energy of this array?
Yeah, so, I mean, I think, you know, that's kind of the direction of Tom, is to look at all, all possible options, then vet them with appropriate stakeholders. So I, I don't think we wanna commit to anyone tonight or limit anyone tonight. We just want Tom to come up with a robust list.
I think you might have covered a lot of these questions.
I think there was one, though. David White?
I'm gonna read that.
Yeah.
David White, eight seventy Gay Street. Thank you for taking my question, and thank you for pulling the soldier, solar project back. Since I moved to Westwood in nineteen ninety-five, I have been actively promoting the preservation of open space in Westwood through the open committee formed by the Smith Board back around nineteen ninety-six to preserve the Lowell Woods. I also have had the privilege of working with the Westwood Land Trust since it was founded in the nineteen nineties. I believe the residents of Westwood hold open space as one of the highest priorities, and I believe the majority of residents would be opposed to the industrial solar project on Shuttleworth Parcel. If any action is to be taken to change the allowable use of this property as set forth in Article thirteen of the nineteen ninety-four town meeting, it must be done by residents at a town meeting. Question, will the select board assure us that this will be the process going forward? Thank you.
So, David, thanks for the question. We could never take an action like that. That would be advisory. So we have to look at each request or proposal as it comes forward. So I, we just couldn't make that type of assurance. I think that was it, Trish, on the questions, right? Okay, do we have a motion?
I'm just looking at what David said and, and your response, John. If any action is to be taken to change the allowable use of this property as set forth in Article thirteen, it must be done the right by the residents at town meeting. That's actually what we did in ninety-four. Because we expanded the use, it needed town meeting vote. So we would follow whatever is required, right?
Right.
I don't think we can actually bypass that.
Yeah. Okay, I just wanted, all right, I'm, I'm happy to make a motion, and I think we should. I move that we amend the memorandum of agreement with Amoresco and withdraw the Shuttleworth parcel from the Phase Two Solar Project.
I'll second.
Discussion. Mrs. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. Okay. Moving on. Oh, is that it, Tish?
That's it.
Okay, public and press. Any public and press? Any other issues? Okay, so the select board will meet again three weeks from tonight on October twenty-sixth at five PM, again via Zoom. Anybody have anything else? We have a motion to adjourn?
I move for your turn.
Second.
Mrs. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
I vote aye as well. All right, good night, everybody. Have a good evening.
Thank you.